Okay, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council Monday, June 23rd, 2025. The regular meeting of the City of Trail Council is being held in the council committee room. At 1394 Pine Avenue, Trail VC and via Zoom live meeting. Meeting at 3 o'clock for the committee of the full meeting. Immediately followed by a closed council meeting and then reconvening at 6:00 PM for the regular council meeting. Meeting webinars are being recorded and published on the city's YouTube site at trail.ca/youtube. So the first item on the agenda is the motion to adopt the agenda please. Councillor Hanson and Councillor Flatler, all those in favor? That was Kerry, thank you. Um, the next item is a resolution to resolve, oh sorry. Yes, the resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole please. Hello, Councillor Hanson, thank you, and Councillor Flatler, all those in favor? That was Kerry, thank you. So today we have a delegation and it is Ron Farrah Pilkin and Harry Measure. Representing the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee to present the crime prevention through environmental design. Case study report dated June 12th, 2025. So welcome Ron and Harry and Brian, thank you. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee and Community Futures South Cootney. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our crime prevention. Through environmental design case study on Trail VC. I have two printed copies I will leave here with you and the PDF is being distributed. Our major funder for this study was Community Futures British Columbia. And I want to thank the many community stakeholders who participated in the process. And of course, City of Trail for your support. But on the next slide please. So why did we do this study? When we first proposed this study about two years ago, our business community was heavily impacted by crime vandalism. Things needed to change and it's great to see that they are now. In the past year, we've seen some amazing positive changes that came about because of the strong leadership of our city council. And we thank you for all that you do. I am joined by Harry Measure of Harry Measure and Associates to my left. And Dr. Brian Kenny, Simon Fraser University School of Criminology. Now I'm going to pass it over to Harry and Harry will explain the study area and methodology. We have the next slide please.
The study area in downtown trail, we broke down into four precincts. Uh, the major zone where the highest frequency of crime and fear of crime is happening. And it extends everywhere from nuisance crimes like panhandling right through violent crimes, uh, property damage theft. Uh, we inventoried and analyzed each one of these precincts. At various times of day and night to get the full spectrum. And then we met with stakeholders, business owners and other people involved. And from there, we put together. A list of SIP Ted principles, crime prevention through environmental design principles that Brian's a specialist in. And made recommendations, uh, next slide.
Yeah, so um, as Harry mentioned, but there's a, there's a few misconceptions with SIP Ted, I was not blurring this out. So Ted is a, as a starting point, uh, in the modern sense and it really represents that. First look at trying to use the environment that's already there to best advantage. So things like, uh, access control, trying to make sure that it's, uh, you know, naturally easy for people to use the space. Presumably with legitimate reasons and have a, 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 an actual reason for being there. Uh, and making it a little bit harder for folks that are, uh, so-called unplanned or unauthorized access. Uh, there's other forms of these techniques that are still with us. Surveillance techniques that can be less intrusive, so maybe not using technology, but just encouraging people to be. Frontside on businesses, have stores that have windows that open up and obviously look out as opposed to just being bombarded with advertisements. Uh, so that people in and outside can see. Obviously what's in there for economic things, but also see outside and know that, you know, uh, there's people moving around. It's a healthy vibrant space. Uh, other things like maintenance, uh, and sort of maintaining your, your milieu and feel of the imagery of the space also is important. So that's part of the design feature that allows, uh, for improvements on, uh, the making sure that lanes are clean. That there's, uh, proper and sort of ongoing, uh, looks at, you know, removing rubbish and having. Uh, other kinds of amenities looked after, uh, paint, uh, just basic things. Um, and other kinds of, uh, more, uh, less direct issues of activity support. Which is trying to make sure that there's a, a sense of, um, someone is thinking about trying to include. Uh, residents, other, other, other people than just, uh, the business owners or operators. Uh, or local users of a space to, um, uh, have other kinds of activities like pop-ups, uh, food, uh, food fairs, uh, farmers markets. And other things to again bring people to bear to the situation of their downtown and to make it more livable and vibrant. Uh, and to see a reason to walk to the end of the block and then, oh, there's maybe a reason to walk to the end of the next block. And then accidentally and on purpose spend some money, get to know your community and sort of just see what's available and sense of wanting to be in that area. Uh, so this, the last thing is the, that, uh, the, on top of this, the, the, what makes this. More, more workable is this more, uh, I guess, second generation of SEPTED, which is. Uh, trying to add back the humanity to it, which is, uh, social development. Uh, this is the favorite model with the national crime prevention, uh, strategy is, is developmental. They take a very specific approach because they have to be candidate-wide. Uh, but for a local environment, this can be, um, things like trying to understand, uh, the misuses of the space a bit better. Uh, work with people and/or areas advocacy groups, et cetera. Um, so it's not simply, um, push people out of the downtown that you don't want and somehow magically think that. Uh, other people are going to come there. So it's a lot more complicated than that, but that's kind of the, the, the basics of, of this approach. Uh, happy to talk about that, uh, being an academic and not used to talking and less doing that. Anyway, I'll stop there, but thank you so much.
Uh, next slide please. Okay, uh, as I mentioned, we did an analysis, it's all documented with photography and other examples of solutions. And where to apply SEPTED principles. And throughout the document for each of these hotspots, uh, we made recommendations, as many as we possibly could. And, uh, some of them are easy, easily achieved, some will take involvement with business associations, um. The RCP, things like that, but we really have added a lot of information and made it pretty obvious. On what to do, uh, next slide. And, uh, as part of the appendices, as trail moves forward in revitalizing their downtown and hopefully, you know, repopulating the area. We've made a list of about 147 recommendations on SEPTED to check. Everything from building per, or as you move forward, but everything from building permits as well to, uh. Development permits, another second appendice, appendice which lists about 50 something recommendations there. So as new buildings are being proposed or renovations, they can go through and have a checklist of. Uh, design features, et cetera, management to compare with maintaining SEPTED. Next slide. Yeah, that, that's the next slide. And that's, yeah. Okay. And, uh.
So a lot of these, uh, recommendations, uh, we're hoping that the, uh, city can look at the two appendices. Uh, the 147 or whatever it was and the, uh, development permit. And he actually create toolkits from it. There may be one, maybe new business licenses can be sent out with new business licenses. To make the new business owners aware of SEPTED principles. So it's a pretty exhaustive list and there is a lot of recommendations in there and they can be pulled out and used in various facets.
Okay, um. What else you have?
On this next slide then? So these are key SEPTED recommendations. Don't know if you can see that, but.
Well, one thing I would say just quickly, um, the, you know, it sounds like a lot, like a checklist of 150 things to, to look at. Um, there's, there's ways of packaging that, as Ron suggested, but also, um, other municipalities, uh, have used similar approaches, notably, uh, Vancouver. Uh, has a, has a version of this, uh, as well. Um, so it, it wouldn't require completely new reinventing the wheel, it would involve, you know, some further work. Um, sort of chasing down what made sense and again, did you want to isolate that? Uh, but some of the recommendations, Harry, did you want to talk or I can, uh, a little bit?
Life rebuilt, okay.
Basics would be, um, refurbishing, you know, new and existing or, or existing projects that are in development stages. So you've got the old, I think it's Edens.
Nine Hundred Spokane.
Okay, yeah, yeah, like, uh, buildings like that where you have a very large frontage. And that is such a keystone location as well as a prior maybe problem premises. Uh, when it was in its, uh, reduced state. So being able to make sure that we don't create another solid wall. For example, as you walk down one corner and walk down the other, if you actually had windows, some, uh, something, um. Architects get excited about the awnings or not awnings or, but there's, there's, there's things to do there to make it more of that, that pull-through.
And mixed use.
And mixed use for sure, like, uh, that's, uh, that's kind of a mantra these days, but it is true. That if you've got people living in the area, then that means you've got obviously better movement and flow through the space. You've got people who know the areas more sort of regularly. Um, but, uh, being able to, as a, as a outsider to come into your location and to see, um, a positive. Uh, not positive, but like an encouragement, an inducement really, to go wander and go sightsee. Is, is that having that, that you kind of get pulled along by streetscapes that are active, but not too active. They're certainly not abandoned and they aren't, um, with a wall of anything. Even lovely greens, green shrubs are great, but they can produce fear and concern when it's not lit right or you're unfamiliar. So they're breaking up the space and not having that one prominent facade of just store. Uh, that's a long way, it also feels like a tunnel, most people don't like walking into a tunnel, even if it's a nice tunnel, so.
But I think it's, you know, a lot too, uh, developed. So we'll go on to the, I guess, the next slide. And, uh, what's next? Um, well, that summarizes the first phase, the crime prevention phase of it. When we started this study, uh, last August, it was when we actually started it, we knew it was only a starting point. Uh, even if all the SEPTED principles are followed, downtown trail still is showing its age. Uh, we need to reinvigorate and revitalize our downtown core. Uh, for that, we need new investment, investment and as Brian mentioned, 900 Spokane Street and 901 Helena. Will soon be blank canvases. Um, to attract new investment in development, we need to attract new residents and new businesses. Uh, the SEPTED study was phase one. Phase two will be about rejuvenating and repopulating. Uh, we didn't plan on having a phase two, but Harry here stepped up. And began, uh, a large amount of work without renew, uh, renovation. Uh, and as this is an economic development project, I'm going to support him in any way that I can. Uh, phase two doesn't actually have an end yet, but it's already in progress. So there will be a phase two and it's going to be about rejuvenating trail. So, um, that concludes our presentation, I guess, next slide, uh. We present the study, uh, to you for your information and thank you for your time and support. And if we have any time left, is there any questions for anyone?
Thank you, Ron. I don't know, does council have any questions for? Councillor Hanson, go ahead.
Chair, thank you very much for your report. Um, one of the things I picked up from the report was about the, the covered stairs and these are quite cherished in our community. However, they don't meet our SEPTED principles per se, especially in the non-winter months. And I was wondering if there's any other communities that, um, have covered stairways as, as well and what they've done to address them without having to remove them.
To my knowledge, no, but then in terms of, it's not about not meeting the SEPTED principles, but how do you respond to the issue? And if we look, parts of it are sightlines, but a lot of the vegetation fallen in. And on the way over to this meeting, um, Brian and I were talking about, we were driving around looking and those are really very unique. Immanities for the community, heritage, amenities, everything. So why not celebrate? Uh, Mayor Rebelstoke is a buddy of mine and when Rebelstoke first started revitalizing their downtown, it's highly successful. They spent $20,000 on festive lighting to hang in the trees. So why not, you know? At the base of the, the hill, a lot of it is overgrown vegetation. And there is certain areas of isolation where people want to go hang out there and just be left alone. Um, like by the association right now. But why not, uh, put festive lighting around the entrance to these stairways? You know, very careful not to, uh, impose on neighboring residences, but. And then as people are driving around and go like, you know, what's that visitors' community? Oh, this is one of Trail's heritage items and features. And you're going to have the whole side of the mountain, little cottages, these are just creative ideas, at least for me anyways, but to resolving issue.
That would fit in with the maintenance and milieu, but like, that is, it's a, it's a love, like you said, a cherished place. But even if it's just a used space and if it's maintained, the, the lighting is organized in a, in a way that, that fits plans. Uh, but if it, it's made, uh, more obviously inviting, I think would do quite a bit. Um, you could get people doing strange crunch exercises on them. You could have all kinds of things happening there, uh, in pro-social ways. And that feeds into the sustainability piece of, of a lot of the efforts to try and track. Um, known problem areas or areas with sort of a rub, it didn't have to be like a full problem, but. Being able to, to, to respect the local use of it and the need for it to be priority and then, yeah, supported.
I like that, obviously inviting.
Um, Councillor Hanson, please.
Thank you so much, um, it's been a pleasure as a council liaison to see this, uh, report come to fruition. And Dr. K, I do have a question for you, so as, uh, we're talking about 900 Spokane, um, that is slated to come down. And so there will be a time where that space is not going to be built upon just because of the timing to build and et cetera. Um, what would be your recommendation? So if that was to say turn into additional parking downtown or something, what would be your recommendation from a crime prevention study? Or what we should do with that space as to prevent, you know, unwelcome loitering, but. Make it a welcome space or parking or lighting or, um, just so that way when there isn't eyes on the street, what should we do with that space?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, um, parking's an, an ongoing problem for, for any downtown or any business area. Um, that, that's one, one solution, um, like, I don't understand the, 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 the compelling pieces of. Does it need to lay fallow a certain amount of time before it can be built on again? Does it need remediation of the, of the soils or something like that? So to the extent that you could intervene and use that space right away. Um, even something, uh, like a bicycle park, like a little, like a, like a kind of a, like a trick park. Um, might be something, um, however, you know, depending on how that would fit with the, the, the vibe of where the, the neighborhood is, that may be. Maybe a bit risque, um, but parking is a, is a solid, uh, short-term gap, uh, probably. Would require the least engineering. Um, and we would be able to move materials to make a way to make it safe and then it would be a. A flat and usable space to start with for the next stages and might even encourage. People to, to bid on, I'm not sure it's already been bid on, but, um, if it's already kind of developed as opposed to a building down. Um, then it might just make it easier for people to vision and, uh, think about new projects. Uh, flat space for public fairs, uh, not paid fairs, but like, uh, uh, food, uh, food trucks, um. Anything, because then it could move and be flat and, and usable. I would think, uh, many different uses would be the best case and then you maybe see what works at the food trucks, food, uh. Food markets, farmers markets. Then.
And then any, what do you, any recommendations on lighting on weekends or anything around that space or just kind of it is what it is or?
Um, well, my, my solution for kind of the, the, the 24-hour loop is, is maybe a bit much for maybe, uh, at this beginning stage would be. Um, having, uh, folks that were not police, but obviously in a kind of a block watch crime prevention. Uh, kind of volunteer setting where you could have, uh, a citizen safe walk kind of program. Uh, entertainment districts do this where they help people sort of make better decisions about driving. Uh, and other kinds of, uh, things, but, uh, this could also be something that could be a liaison with any, um, sort of grassroots. Uh, local advocacy groups that are looking after people who are living on the street. So you could maybe have that as an opportunity to pair that with mild business or sort of administrative concern plus. Advocacy groups, finding people that are in real distress, people down. Um, the, the golden hour of response for people in, in, you know, medical distress would be. One of the primary benefits of that kind of a center and that could benefit maybe, uh, a certain area of the town, if that makes sense. Uh, in short, that's, that's my first sort of unsustained kind of thoughts, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Right, Councillor Benson, thank you, through the chair. Just one more question I had was in the report when it's talking about where the new shelter is located. It mentioned that crime is reduced downtown, but now there's more, um, by the shelter. We haven't, we've received opposite, um, data on that, so just wondering, is that like a perceive or perception or is it?
Well, it's, it's died down a bit because the police are monitoring, but, uh, but there was incidents of drug dealing there. And, uh, also it's kind of isolation area in that park where people are just, you know, sitting at the end of the bridge. The walking bridge, but, but, and swatting. But I, it's not the same level as it was downtown. And certainly it's not really impacting much out there.
Thanks.
But I think by and large, uh, as in the postscript in here, there's been a lot done. A lot of it is right in itself since a better location for the shelter has occurred. But there's all sorts of recommendations in here, it comes out of further along. But I, I think compared to a lot of other communities, we're in pretty good shape though.
Okay, is there any other questions from council? Oh, thank you so much for coming today and for your, uh, study and, yeah, we'll, um. Save it for one, I wish, uh, thank you, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to our departmental, um, verbal updates. And the first one is from Jared, oh, yeah, Jared, yeah. They moved.
Your worship, councillors. Uh, so since we last spoke a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, my main focus is to highlight the activity last week was participation in the. Very long but worthy trail health and environment program, knowledge sharing and learning onboarding tour. Uh, it was a very great event, a lot of great people came to participate. I was really impressed with specifically the regulatory engagement with interior health and administrative environment presence, that was. That was a great show of support. Um, personally for myself, being new to the community, it was really great to get the sense of the historical effort and collaboration. Amongst all those groups that went into the efforts and ongoing efforts in managing the impacts of the support we have from our industry partners, so. That was a great, great piece of news. I will provide also a brief update on behalf of our roads and ground crew, who is also not the all-to-be here today. And a little snippet from our utilities folks as well, if that is all right. Uh, bit of a brief follow-up, um, regarding the gazebo that was brought up in the last committee of the whole meeting. Um, we've engaged with the road recon, we've had some good discussions about some potentials and athletes moving forward. So that rests with them right now for some discussion and they'll be coming back to us with some opportunities to, to talk about how to best move forward there. Um, the Roseland Avenue cleanup, the results of that water main break have now been completed. So everything's looking spiffy clean over in that area. The glimmered green space, um, in and, in and about the, the, um, school construction area. So that was, uh, we had to cut and cleaned up last week. Um, looking much better considering the condition overall has not yet changed as a result of the impacts, but at least it's cleaned up. Resulting in some positive feedback from our residents who have raised some concerns, so. Good step forward that, that way and we'll also be maintaining it in its current state while we evaluate other options moving forward. Uh, Jarrow Park, um, as I've just learned, is a key part of the graduation exercises. Uh, so that was the main focus last week, making sure that everything from the grounds, um, the, some of the danger trees. Um, the graffiti, um, was all removed in preparation to support the, the graduation. Uh, exercises, one, one small note there, we were able to, uh. Test a new graffiti remover, a biodegradable graffiti remover. And I happened to be there, we were actually there during the knowledge sharing and tour. To much excitement, it works really well. So, very exciting and hoping to test it in other locations, including areas where there are more environmental sensitivities. Um, I'm sure nobody needs to be reminded is the wonderful weather we had over the weekend. Uh, with that significant amount of rainfall, we've had a fair bit of heavy runoff. And we've also had a couple of large trees, or specifically one large maple tree up on Circle Street. So crews are busy responding to those, cleaning up some of that debris, making, making sure that the roadways are clear. And thankfully with the large maple tree, which did impact both the Forest Line and Tous Line, there was no damage to any of the infrastructure, so. It's been fully cleaned up and ready to go. Uh, we continue to respond to water breaks, seems to be a bit of an unseasonably large amount of water breaks at this time of year. Um, last one being a service main, which was great, not, I'm sorry, service line, not a main line, which was great news. But we'll continue to, to make sure that those will be responsive. Uh, so that was it for the update from Lozberg. Any questions?
Any other questions from council? I have one question here, at, at Jarrow Park. It looks like, uh, you're building a stage or something there, just outside of the, um. Boot vendor, you know, it's, you've got the poles up and not anything else.
Yes, so my understanding and someone in the room may correct me if I'm a little off-base. But to support the live music in the park. That is being created as a bit of a band show area where we've, as you noted, erected some. Beans that will support two shade sales.
A number of shade.
A number of shaded sales. Um, so we're just at that point between that and at that point of install.
Okay, great. And it was really sad to see, I, I noticed all the work you did at Jarrow because I walked through there. I'm quite often with my dog on a leash and, um. It was really sad that they had to move the celebrations into their curling rink. Uh, the, the parade, the march on, um, Saturday, yeah, it looked so good out there. But I mean, they made it work, it was great, yeah, and they made it work, so my granddaughter was graduating this summer. Yeah. So thank you for the work that you're doing now, thanks Jared. Okay, so next we have Valie Rose Jones. Thank you ma'am.
Yeah, good morning, council. Uh, I'm going to provide, uh, an update following, um, my last update on 909 Old Spokane as the major project's in engineering right now. Uh, so further from a month ago, uh, there's nothing really new to report as far as the budget of the project. The schedule still remains on schedule, completion by the end of September at this point. Uh, the kinetic is the invading contractor on site working for local. They're reporting to me that they're approximately 60% complete at this point with the work that they're doing with 901 Helena. Uh, with demolition anticipated in the week of July 14th by local. Um, following 900 Spokane demolition in the middle. Um following nine hundred Spokane demolition in the middle of August. Uh as far as the public impact at this point, it's still very minimal at this current phase of the project. Uh work is primarily within the structures. Uh the demolition phase will see some additional park enclosures and land closures around those buildings. And some temporary modifications to the transit exchange so that we can uh accommodate the excavation effects, excavator demolition. Uh during this progress, uh some of the key accomplishments that Connecticut outlined to me, uh asbestos containing materials, twenty-six metric tons removed from that nine O one Helen Street building. As well as seventeen tons of non-haz waste and four and a half tons of recycled metal. Uh during the last several weeks, we have identified several areas of additional asbestos containing materials that were not outlined in the pre-demolition reports. Uh so we're currently working through mitigation on that using our unit enforcement rates from our tender package to uh mitigate the costs associated with that work. Uh and finally, I know there's been some discussion uh before the project started, I spoke with our communications coordinator about figuring out a way to take some photos or document the process. Uh engineering finds use our drone during the demolition phase to get some photos which we can use let the public know what's going on and use for our annual reports. And that's all. If there's any questions?
No questions. You know, last time when we took the Union Hotel down, we had a camera on there so people could go on to our website and watch it being um denied. Yeah. So I had spoken to Mr. McClure about that and I have not sent him the link that I so my apologies, I will do that so you can share it or whatever you need for the information, but I think it would be a great way for the community to be able to watch. I like that for a little bit. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, Ben.
You too.
And we have the uh facilities maintenance manager, please.
Your worship and council, thank you for having me here today. Uh I'd like to provide an update on both the Kaminko Arena Refrigerated Floor Project and our heat recovery project. So starting with the Kaminko Arena Refrigerated Floor. Uh budget-wise, we're currently within our planned budget for the overall project. And we're currently on schedule. And meeting uh meeting some critical milestones. So the demo, the demolition phase of the project has concluded. And we're word construction has moved on to the subbase preparation and the installation of the heated floor. Uh first layer sand infill has been laid and compacted and underslaved heat piping installed and they're currently covering uh the heat piping of the second half of that sand infill. It's gonna be followed by the brine line installation and rebar installation leading up to my next reporting period. Uh the public impact remains the same. There's just a reduction of the parking available and site access at T M C. Uh key achievements so far. We have had the safe removal of the old concrete floor. And excavation and remediation of the underslaved soil with all the of these like contaminated material has been being transported safely to tech. We have no, there's no um currently no identified risks at this stage in the project. Then moving on to the heat recovery and R T U placement project. We are we've had, we've hit some key milestones, working a number of critical uh long lead time pieces of equipment. And public impacts on this objective is the same. Just production and parking and site access. Uh Midwest Mechanical will be mobilizing to the site uh this week and we've been moving into demolition phase of our boiler plant, full bad excavation and structural concrete for both side of our ammonia plant. And there are also no identified risks at this stage. So any questions?
Any questions from council? No? Okay, thank you very much. And the next one is the perks and recreation. Your day more than.
And your worship, council. Just to build on the excellence analysis by G N Minor, um the construction going on at Gyro is in support of the Trail District Arts Council. Uh so they received a grant um to make some improvements for the music in the park. Um so they wanted to build up some support sales that can create this faux um band shell. Um and so we just supported them with the installation of this and now that they have those in place,
Yeah.
they can measure for the exact um sale measurements which are being um manufactured for them currently.
Is that for shade, shade or?
Uh it was a mixture of both. Yeah, there was some complaints from the um the bands that it would get locked in the summer, um sort of that and also the aesthetic of having kind of a band shell type um structure there. Yeah, so they were hopeful that um they will be up in here in time for the first music in the park on June twenty-sixth, um but we're just awaiting those manufactured. Uh and then I'm just gonna provide uh uh updates for the aquatic side uh on behalf of Gabby, our um personal rep manager. Um so on May eighteenth, they had the pirate day at the Trail Aquatic uh Inertia Center. I had over a hundred and thirty participants um for that evening swim, uh themed swim. Uh and to build on that success, on July eighteenth, they are doing a Hawaiian luau themed swim uh in the evening. Um for both of those, uh they partnered with the Family Action Network and Fair um who purchased twenty family passes um from the city um to be able to give to their network there so that there were a number of individuals that could attend that. Um and then outside of that, regular drop-in fees apply. Um we have on average uh between two to four birthday parties booked um every week this summer at the Trail Aquatic Inertia Center, which is great. Um the s- uh senior um guards have completed teaching both a bronze medallion and a bronze cross. Um both of those courses were at capacity, um which has not happened in a number of years. And then in July, we will be running a national lifeguard course, um which is the one course you need to become a lifeguard outside of the other two. Uh and then uh long in the future here, I guess not totally far off, but they will also be doing a haunted house um swim for Halloween, which we haven't done in a few years, um but they're gonna bring a big event back um to support that in, in October. And that's all I have for the update. Any questions?
It's a very busy place.
Yes, yes, it's been good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um and to build on um GM Butler, last week we hired a number of lifeguards, um and most of those were from the slide. Um they were water slide attendants. So now we are interviewing a number of individuals to fill the water slide attendant positions. So yeah, just a continual move, but we should have some new, new employees uh by the end of next week.
Great. Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, David.
Thank you.
And we have up Recreation Program Coordinator, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me. Um so yeah, just our updates here for summer. Summer's coming up. Summer's very busy in my area. So we uh I've just finished hiring the new full-time summer staff. Um they're gonna be starting next week. Starting Monday, we're gonna start doing some pre-planning for the whole summer and then I'll be training them and getting them all ready to go. Um the official camp starts July seventh. It runs all summer, Monday to Friday, nine to three, nine to three thirty. And so yeah, it's a full-on day every day of the week, which is a great service that we provide. Um and it's actually going extremely well. Um so far, our first week, we have forty-three kids registered. Um so it might mean that I might have to hire more leaders, so depending on the numbers, we can engage it by that. So so that's going very well so far. Um the other summer program that's quite large for, for my area is the summer at the skate park. We offer the the free skateboard coaching, um and we do provide equipment so anybody can come, kids, youth, adult, um come and give it a try at the skate park. It encourages people to come to the park. Um it encourages safety, um skateboarding safely, following the rules, you know, just get an added presence. So it's a really good way to like keep that park running smoothly and people appreciate it. I think there's some good respect there with that area. So I think our program is helping and this is our fifth year of running that. And I have two hosts that I've hired, so they're gonna be running all through July and August. So um we also have our Challenger Soccer Camp, which is in July. It's a full week. And um they're gonna be sending us three coaches this summer. And um our goal, like so far, we have thirty-five registered. Um last year, we had one of the highest camps in North America for attendance of fifty. So our goal is to get the fifty. So um working with the Challenger Company, we have, they have promotions that they send out to past participants and then I'll do emails to past participants. So we want to encourage a lot of attendance for that too. So so working on that. Um also coming up in July is some tennis camps. We have a volleyball camp and we also have our, our next senior dance. So and then lastly is our leisure guide. We're actually already starting work on our fall/winter guide. So our first draft is actually due this Friday, which is crazy, but we're already starting to think of fall and winter. So yeah, just trying to round up instructors and different ideas and events and that sort of thing. So our, our goal for that is to, well, it, the plan is in place that um uh the guide will be done, delivered, printed and delivered by August fifteenth to the community and then uh registration will be starting August twenty-sixth is our goal date, council.
That's cool. Any questions? Any questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you all for coming today. I always appreciate your reports and keeping us up to date and letting us know. So um you're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, we also understand. So we'll move on to the staff reports. Oh yeah, staff reports. And we've got the first one up is the month we look for. And it is the report on invoices paid. And the recommendation is that council consider and resolve to receive the information of the uh invoices paid for municipal services from May first to thirty-first of twenty twenty. Counselor um Martin is everyone in favor?
That's Carrie. Thank you. Um item B is the memorial vet program policy enforcement. And I believe that um Ben, yes, you'll be our thank you.
Well, good afternoon. So uh this, this report uh covers off some changes that were made to this program in eighteen. Um in twenty twelve, when it was in its inception, there was no policy in place and uh to look at the long-term viability of the program, council, the previous council or council's previous put some thought to what that would look like and how we could manage this program moving forward. Uh and some of the changes they came up with were timelines around the usage of benches and renewal periods. Uh so the language that exists is already in the policy, but it was not um communicated to a, a number of the people who memorialize benches early on in the program. So if I believe the number is about a hundred and forty-seven benches prior to twenty eighteen. Um so the recommendation from this report um is just to get staffs less into create a letter that we can send out to those people who are potentially unaware of the changes that have happened or that their benches are no longer within conform, conforming with this policy. Um to give them a grace period of uh recommended eighteen months to decide whether they'd like to renew their sponsorship with their advantage program or let their bench go. Um understanding that it may be difficult to make contact with a number of these families as the owners themselves may have passed uh or contact information for those families may have changed. Uh so that, that in essence is, is what this report is looking for is just to enforce the existing policy that's in place and to get councils for any direction or um approval in enforcing that policy. And any questions with regard to the report?
Council Benson, thanks. You're the chair. I guess if this was already adopted, why do we need a motion to enforce it?
I think maybe it was more
Was it to like reaffirm it?
Yes, I would say that just again, maybe more about uh understanding and uh let council know because this can be an emotionally sensitive topic for some and and that we are going to move forward, explain it to the current council because it is a policy that's in place, but it's also, I think, wise to bring it forward. See if this, you know, council has the ability to adopt or change and have these types of policies. So if there was something there that you didn't like to see or that you wanted us to uh uh look at before we move forward on this. Um I think more of it's, like you said, a uh don't want councils to be blindsided, don't want councils to be phoned. Um I thought this was what we're talking about. So it, it is just about trying to make sure that we're all on the same page as we move forward on this policy.
Get another question, as a person.
Uh I guess in the report, it talks about the um maybe like over saturation of benches, but without an accessibility plan yet published in our aging population. Can we say that yet if we don't? I can see the need for more benches in the future.
Hmm. Well, I think it is at that time and, and it tends to be uh people want them in the popular places, so gyro, so that you can also bench agree.
Hmm.
Part of it is trying to recognize that as much as we have people coming in wanting to do that, how many do you want to have in gyro park? How many do you want to have? Uh there is, and I would say that that's the other part of the program. I think it's important is that if someone wants to honor their loved one in a place like that because their parents walked there or who members walked there. If you are now having kind of a timeline on, do you want to renew yours that those will now open those up for people that may want to honor the ones that we currently have? Does it mean there aren't other opportunities? I just think right now is trying to handle the policy. That's, that's the biggest, I think, challenge for staff as well.
And is there a reason that this wasn't? Uh like I know they're on the new ones because I've had a family member pass away and we know it's written on it when you buy it, but is there a reason that previous ones weren't?
Yeah, and I think like you said in my comments, said this is not common. This is a, that people people wake up to or staff go, do, did anyone realize at the time it seemed like a great idea to have memorial benches, um memorial picnic tables, but at what, like how long is that for? Right? You know, a lot of times when you pay into the cemetery program, you actually pay an additional fee that actually makes it so that there's funding there in perpetuity. So then when I go, hey, done with your spa, if you want to move on, but this, I think that, you know, that would be even more lies in um people weren't thinking that far down as far as like, hey, you know, it's the same. I see a lot of these things happening when people run into problems saying like, hey, I paid two hundred dollars for that bench. You should have a new bench for me every, you know, so long timeframe and that really was a lot of pressure on the actual program itself. So um I, I, a lot of communities and in fact ours is one of the ones that gets, get calls about it, saying the K S L that you have put in some time frames on your memorial bench, um kind of best practices.
Uh Council Martin, you had your head up?
Yeah. Uh thank you through the chair. Thanks, Ben. Um what does it cost for people to renew it? I missed it. I was, I missed it. I apologize.
Yeah. So uh through the chair, it's currently uh it's based on an assessment of the bench. So after the fifteen-year period, uh our carpenter will go assess the bench, determine if it needs any plants, painting, whatever that looks like. Um and the sponsor will be responsible for any costs associated with bringing your bench back up to our standard.
Okay.
Chair, go ahead.
I just, when I'm walking around, I see these things. I think it's historical value to somebody's too, whether the families are around or not. Um obviously, when you go to start with the eighteen-month grace period, when you start looking for folks to see if they want to renew it, are you gonna start with the ones? I'm not trying to be disrespectful that may not have family in the area anymore to want to renew it?
Uh if, as, as the person is currently managing program, I would be starting from the benches in two thousand and two that were put in that are twenty-three years old. Um it wouldn't be based on the families. Everyone, as it says in the report, they're, they're setting one benches early that have extended beyond that time period. Um and, and again, the part of this report is just to, to bring forward like this will be an onerous task um to go through this and to continue to have this. to go through this and to continue to have this as a viable program. Because we are, our, our resources are taxed to keep these benches maintained as well as following up and installing. So I, I would be treating it as, let's start from the first benches moving forward and then get to a place where we're dealing with this as the policy says, six months prior to expiry.
Okay, thanks, bud.
Council Hanson, through the chair. So, I just thought to Council Martin's maintenance fees, do we have an average kind of cost one of these that are older? What would that look like? Is it the two hundred dollar bill? Is it a six hundred dollar bill? Like, what kind of cost, because I mean, those benches are ordered, you guys have, there's a minutes ago ordering for the outdoor solid furniture, what is the cost for one of those benches? And then what does it cost to repairs them? And what does the number look like?
Yeah, so through the chair again, up to this point, I've done five renewals. Families reach out to me about their benches, I've expressed to them that they have expired and that with the new policy, they, they can do the renewal period. Those are costing anywhere between a thousand to twelve hundred dollars. Typically, the families that are reaching out requesting an additional plaque put on there, so that's a cost that's associated with that as well. A new bench itself, if the bench is incomplete disrepair, is twenty-five hundred dollars, and it starts at a fifteen-year agreement.
Sorry, go ahead. And so what is the process? So Mr. Smith passed away, can't contact any family. Now what do you do with this plaque? Do we dispose of it, or do we, or can we look at what it would look like to have the spot for dedication plaques just mounted somewhere? Like permanently, instead of on something that would be needing repair consistently? With any kind of unknown, like the unknown soldier kind of thing, right? Like, all of those to, to one space?
The policy does speak to that, that we would make an effort to reach out and get the plaque back to the family. But in, in the circumstances where we were unable to do that, we would remove a certain pension, that bench would be resold. There is nothing in the policy that speaks to returning plaque to a family that we can't contact. So that's, that would be something that if this council wants to put some thought to, as far as what that looks like, it's time to hurry, something that's resolved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just about twenty-five hundred dollars, you mentioned, that's sort of been the same price since twenty-eighteen.
Yes.
Is there any thought that we should be increasing that a little bit?
At this point, I think if we were, if we were to go the route where we're contacting the families, a lot of the expense with these benches initially was putting in concrete pads, the labor around that. Based on the current price and the cost of a bench and a plaque, I think the program was never meant to be a money-making thing. It was meant to sustain itself, and at this cost, if we go this route, it's still sustaining itself.
And through the chair, it's important that when people bought these, it's a donation receipt that we're buying, so it can, so there's a... Our advice is on.
Okay, okay, if there's no other questions, I think I'm going to read this recommendation on, because it's I, I feel like it's an important one. So the recommendation for council to consider and resolve is that council approve staff to send a letter informing donors who purchase benches prior to the creation of policy PW zero-one-five-dash-one, how the policy impacts their sponsorship in the program, including to provide sponsors who have already exceeded the fifteen-year maintenance period with a grace period of fifteen months to decide if they would like to renew their sponsorship as per the terms of the policy PW zero-one-five-dash-one. Following the grace period, or in the event, no contact can be made with the donor family, plaques would be removed, returned if possible, and the bench returned to the inventory to be resold as per policy. Is there someone that would like to make that motion, please, Councilor Butler? All those in favor? Thank you. Doug, how did you vote on that one? Okay, thank you. And that was Carrie, we got this one up. Okay, West Cooney Minor Softball Association, Haley Park Batting Cage, yes, agreement, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Your Worship, Council. So, as I'm sure you're aware, the West Cooney Minor Softball Association had come to counsel for a grant aid, also through the rate grants, for some funding to build a batting cage up at the Haley Park complex. The location of the batting cage is proposed to be within parks or between parks number one and number two, which used to house the old playgrounds. In twenty-twenty-one, that was removed due to disrepair, and it was a kind of, you know, weird spot in the sense of servicing mostly more fields as a community, outside of some users for the, and that's why the council declined, decided to remove that without replacing it. Staff had no plans to place anything in that area, and it's currently sitting empty. West Cooney Minor Softball Association came to staff with the request. In, in the initial iteration of it, they were looking just to build it, and then kind of just leave it at that for use, with the city taking it over as a managing it, but then it would kind of be open to everyone and under the city's kind of facility booking structure. However, they didn't, they felt it was more prudent to go through a lease agreement so that they would have sole use of it after they had raised the funds to purchase it and install it. The caveat at Haley Park is that the city have trailed leases that land, do tech mingle. And within that lease, we had to get their permission to do any kind of sublease with the West Cooney Minor Softball Association. And so in that time, they've been continuing on their funding goals, and we were working to get a lease agreement in place, which now we have a draft in front of us. And they have verbally been awarded the remainder of their funding goal, contingent on signing a lease agreement to be able to purchase this, or to move forward with this. Hence why staff is requesting that we approve this in today's committee of the whole and at the regular meeting to not cause delays until, so they can start their construction process as soon as possible. There is no natural considerations to the city at this time, as it will be fully funded through the West Cooney Minor Softball Association. So I am asking council to approve the West Cooney Minor Softball Association's request to install a batting cage at Haley Park, and further allow authorized staff to enter into the lease agreement as attached to this report, with the addition of any schedules to be confirmed upon signing.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there any questions?
Council Hanson, go ahead. Uh, thank you, so just a couple of questions. So one, with the lease, I'm glad to see that it is them that is completely responsible for maintaining it. Is the city so responsible to cut the grass? We, we have to all do all of that kind of maintenance around it, repair the sands or whatever, or is it solely their explicit maintenance of that space?
Through the chair, thank you. So the footprint of approximately fifty feet by twelve feet within the cage, and the cage itself will be theirs. The grass around it will continue to be ours, as it is now. Kind of a big teardrop shape of grass within the two parks. That around the cage will remain ours, but they will be fully responsible for everything to that occasion.
My second question, that's okay. The other question is, when that playground got taken down, that was originally there, was there any forethought of relocating that playground? Because I can tell you with being up there lots, there were tons of kids. And where they're, they're kind of watching their parents right now, like they're more concerned with pot flies and stuff coming out there than... But it was also too far for parents to let their kids go out of sight. So is there another, or has there ever been a spot looked at to put a new, smaller playground structure that is more accessible? You know, maybe around the track or something where it's a little bit safer, a little bit closer to the parents, has that ever been reviewed?
Yes, through the chair. So at the time, when we were looking, because we received a third-party report on that playground, and, and to not put it back into service after it was closed during COVID, we looked at other options up there, because we did have some funding and were replacing them. There was some thoughts, a, a, kind of adjacent fence driving into the Haley Park complex towards the washrooms there, but in speaking with Track and Field, who is another large user of the Haley Park complex, they use all of that for javelin, so we didn't really want the playground right beside there. Stop, but, so most of that space of that facility, we shouldn't even find that body, is in use. And it was very difficult, so that, the council at the time reallocated that funding to fund new swing sets at parks with playgrounds, but didn't have swing sets, it would be allocated that funding.
Is there any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Muthler.
At, well, not embarrass myself, but I noticed the cage in the floors, it doesn't have like a roof on it. And I was sort of, like, from what I could tell, is there, is there a netting over top of it?
Yeah, so it's, it's twofold in the sense that it has a chain link roof, but then also within the chain link is actually a netting system as well, to dampen the balls.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move to the recommendation. And the recommendation is that council approve the West Cooney Minor Softball Association request to install a batting cage at Haley Park. And further, that council authorize staff to enter into the lease agreement as attached to the report dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five WKMSA Haley Park batting cage lease agreement with the addition of schedules to be confirmed upon signing. Council Benson? All those in favor? That was agreed, thank you. Yeah, okay, that was unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna give that.
Thank you. Hey, on to unsightly premises, eleven-twenty-five Tamarack Avenue, over to Sutini. Thank you, Your Worship, to the chair. We have another unsightly premise before you this evening, this one is located at eleven-twenty-five Tamarack Avenue. It is behind the seven-eleven, I'm sure council's well aware of the problems we've been experiencing in this area for quite some time. The city did undertake considerable removal of debris and material in the last couple of months, that was considered to be on the city laneway. That was fairly successful in cleaning things up. The, the property owner at eleven-twenty-five, though adjacent to that lane, has in particular two derelict vehicles that bylaw would really like to see removed. More recreation vehicle, bus of some sort. So it's being recommended that, that council enforce the unsightly premises bylaw on this property and pass the resolution so that we can start that process. Any questions from council on this property? Okay, so as Mr. Sutini stated, the recommendation is before you, is there someone that would like to make that? Thank you, Council Hanson, all those in favor? That was Carrie unanimously, thank you. Okay, item number seven, reports from others, and this is a Kootenay South Mantis application to wait rental waiver. This is here to formalize the grant that we did put forward for the so, gazebo at Jarrow Park for Natural Indigenous Day. So the recommendation is that council consider and resolve that the application from Kootenay South Mantis for rental waiver in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents for their use of the Jarrow Park, the gazebo tables, chairs, and, sorry, on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, for the annual Indigenous Day celebration be approved. Council Martin, thank you, all those in favor? And that was Carrie. Is there anything for a question period? Or anyone for a question?
I do see one, yes, Your Worship, if you do have a question at this time, please use the raise hand function. I see none.
Okay, thank you. So, resolution to rise from the committee of the whole. And so council consider resolve to rise from the committee of the whole. Is there someone to, thank you, Council Benson, second your please, all those in favor? Carrie unanimously. And also a resolution to exclude, exclude the public, recess the public meeting until six P M and immediately convene into the closed session. The resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public will be excluded from this portion of the meeting as the subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter, section ninety-one C, employee relations. Community charter, section ninety-one E, acquisition of land. Community charter, section ninety-one K, negotiations relating to the provisions of a municipal service. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six P M. And further, that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of their meeting. So I need to make that motion, thank you, Council Hanson. And Council Butler, thank you, all those in favor? That was carried unanimously, thank you.